...was morally right. Bless each individual here on council, bless all of ones here collectively as a body that we will be bound together with the cords of love that nothing and no one can separate. Father, we thank you, we praise you, and we lift you up. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. If we could stand through the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Got some comments from citizens. I think the only one that we have signed up to speak is Mr. Mulkey.
Good afternoon, councilman. Isaiah Burrhead.
That's right.
Mr. Neely. Lois, you're the only one I don't know anything on from the old days, but that's pretty good. I'm first of all here to apologize. I could not make the last two council meetings. We had a project going on with Furman University trying to get the football field ready for soccer for the Grand Ole Troops. So, we were putting in late nights. But believe me, I was watching it and I was just boiling when I saw Mr. Crawford and Mr. Jose come in here and Mr. Crawford standing here like he always does attacking this council. Seems to do that every time Mr. Jose comes into town, talking about what the city hadn't done for him, or y'all haven't done this. And you know, last year, Brian, I think, could probably play it back for you, I did suggest, I said, you know, we've got a lot of new folks in town, it would be nice to see your faces coming out. And I used examples of the concert series, restaurants in town, coming up, meeting some of the folks that are playing trivia on Wednesday nights, that are from the reserve that are coming in, and things like that. I never once said, like Mr. Crawford, y'all need to come here, y'all need to come down, y'all need, it's all about him. But I'm gonna tell you, I'm fed up with it. Those folks have done nothing but irritate you all, attack you, and I'm proud of you. You sit here and take it, but it's not justified. There have been so many lies spread by Mr. Crawford and Mr. Jose, and I had invited some folks from county council and offices, but they're all at the Carolina game tonight. They assured me they'd try to make the next meeting, so. Anyway, I just want, I'm proud of you. I know, I've known you all my life. Mr. Neely, I really, yeah, I delivered his paper both at his store and at the courthouse. So, I'm from here. I'm not a Jose. I don't want to be a Mr. Jose. I'm a citizen from this community. I don't live in the city, but I think some of the things I bring to you are always factual. And now, I'm gonna get into some factual things. You all know, you were part of when Mr. Chris here was working with us. We had a meeting right after the flood down there at the, before the opening of Market and Mill. Chris will verify that we had county officials there, Duke Power officials there, Piedmont, you know, Foothills Gas or Piedmont Gas, the Eastland Company, the engineers from Duke Power, former employees of Singer that were trying to help us in the transition, that were trying to work with us on there. And Mr. Jose just stood there and said, whatever it takes so I can get a temporary occupancy. Let me factual, temporary. And we started forward with all of that. And Chris will let you, you know, verify this. We were given, this has to be done. We finally got a temporary, but did the list ever get completed? I've been gone for a year and a half from down there, but I can point blank tell you, because I got an earful from Mr. Eli Angel from Bridge Brothers, that none of the things I was working on for him, when I was working for him, have been completed. They've been lied to over and over and over. One of the biggest problems with Bridge Brothers is part of that building where the paint booth is at, the sprinkler system was, is not attached to the main trunk system. We found this out by accident, and Mr. Rick from Singer said, well, when we tore this building down, that was part of that sprinkler system. Chris has given them multiple deadlines to have a contract to get that done. Mr. Crawford has constantly lied to him, oh, we got this, they're coming, and then it goes, oh, that's gonna cost too much. It's not a matter of if it's gonna cost them, it has to be done for them to have their insurance. They're not, I'm not gonna say they're not using it, there's been a little forgiveness here, letting them, because we don't want to see Bridge Brothers go, they are our employer, they're, we hope, want to see them grow. Now, this is a company that fired me, let me go, and I'm still here defending them. And I was hoping that I could have Eli here, but he had to go back to Portland, Oregon, to their other plant. I was gonna let him tell you the things that promised. The roof has not been fixed. And this is just not him, this is the main market. Mr. Crawford stood here and said they were losing vendors to City of Pickens downtown? Well, yeah, these folks have got fed up down there and they moved, and I'm glad they're moving to Main Street. Few of them have moved to Easly, and there's gonna be a lot more moving. I'm proud that one of the ladies, she's moving in and reopening Margaret's Flower Shop. My cousin Margaret, or Virginia's is how most people know. I'm proud that she's taken a step, it's a west end Main Street, historically, I'm glad she's doing well. I'm proud of all the restaurants are revived that moved out, and I support them, but I haven't come here to say, do me a favor, do me a favor. Think about the folks, we all were given a false sense bill of goods by Mr. Jose and Mr. Crawford. Factually, he has lied and said things and constantly degrading the mayor, and then calls him, come down here. Factually, this is all known facts. He stood on the courthouse steps talking about the water tower, he was attacking you, y'all need to do, there's only four of these in the country, and then that same evening, 20 people had posted pictures of water tires with the witches hat, as he described it, just in the upstate. When I come to you with facts, I've researched it, I've thought about it, I haven't come attacked anybody about the water, I'm a firm believer, yes, we will figure out a way. And I think it's gonna be, need to be done with citizen input as well, it's some historical, but there's a way. But here's the last and final thing before leaving, and this was two Saturdays ago, I've been going down to J.C. Park, I walked my dog Ringo on the park down through there, and there was a young lady down, this is the same day that Hagan Mill was having their kids' day. She had five autistic kids with her, and she said, do you know when they're gonna reopen this park? And I said, it was supposed to, supposed to, and I know you all closed it so repairs could be done, but I think we have filled our community as a group and, by not, anything hadn't been done. And she said, I can't take my kids around other kids and let them play because of the fact they're autistic. And I can understand that, I've got friends with autistic children, they can't functionalize with other kids. What do we have to do? Do we need a group of citizens to come through and help you and try to present a plan, an idea, that we can all work together and get this thing moving forward rather than it sitting there closed for the whole summer? I'm just hoping for suggestions, and I'd be more than happy to reach out to some folks, because I was part of when that was built. I was proud to be a part of that. And I just want to see it get back open soon.
It's my understanding that it is gonna open soon. We do have some dead trees there that have to be taken down that's a danger. We're gonna remove some of that equipment, but the park's gonna be opened back up.
Well, if you need me to try to help get some volunteer labor on weekends, we built that thing in two and a half weekends. I think I can, I think I can generate enough folks to come out and be willing to help. They can't do it all, but we're willing to get out there and get our hands dirty.
Well, we've got some stuff that we're gonna take out over there, and the rest of it can be rebuilt and redone after it's opened up. But it's my understanding that it's, the last word I had, it's gonna be open soon.
All right.
I do know that we got some dead trees there that have to be taken down that's a danger of falling, and it's my understanding those are gonna be done real soon, soon as the guy can get there and get them taken down.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any more comments from citizens? If not, if not, we'll move to the resolution. Clerk Owen, please.
Yes, sir. Members of council, this resolution, 2023-R7 is a resolution recognizing and honoring a lifelong public servant that's been very active in the Pickens Municipal Association.
Okay. I think we need a vote on that.
You do.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2023-R7.
Second.
A motion being made by Isaiah and a second by Lois. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Elrod for the administration.
Yes, sir. I'm not your administrator, obviously, but I'm filling in tonight. You have a little memo from C.C. in there. First thing is the East Baker Street rezoning, some notes in there from Jennifer Visage about that. The planning commission will take that up on April the 11th, but council will have that final decision on April the 24th. Also, 247 Ann Street, the former spa location, is not allowed or approved in the current residential zone, and the council will need to make a final decision on regard to zoning request change for that as well coming up. The roll carts that were purchased for the art supplies have been delivered to Public Works, they came in on three truckloads, there's a lot of carts down there. She explained to me that the company will help distribute those out in the coming weeks, so our folks are not having to try to figure out how to exchange all those carts, so they'll be helping with that. The events calendar has been updated, and a community work day has been planned, or in the process of being planned for April the 15th. More details for that to come. You also see the memo in your packet from Jennifer Visage, the planner, talking about those two items, and your budget statements are also in your packet for our current state of the fiscal year.
Thank you. And also on the fireside, Mr. Elrod.
Yes, sir. I know that much better. The ladder truck, we're pretty close to getting it into service, they've done about half the striping on it. The silver stripe that we're gonna put on it has been backordered, so it's, I just got an email that was shipped out on Friday, so hopefully this week we'll be able to get the stripe. They got the blue stripe, they got the old off, the blue stripes on it, so it's really starting to come together. Probably about 75% of the equipment has come in for it now, so we're working to try to get all of it mounted in the truck. My goal is to have it on the road by the end of April. Give them a attainable goal for that. Update on the light towers, we had purchased for the city through a grant, one of them was actually supposed to already be here, it shipped out on the 16th of April, I'm sorry, March. The second one, the one that actually is a little bit larger, they pushed the ship date back a bit to August, so we're not gonna have it until August. But other than that, the fire problem's going well. Overall, February's kind of a slow month for us, but that's traditional. We'll start getting a little bit busier as the weather starts to warm up, so. If you come by and see us, see how packed we are down there, just be careful walking through, you don't bump your head on stuff. Everything's going good.
Great. Good job. Thank you. Chief Beach is not in here at this time.
You gotta take a call.
We'll, we'll move on to the recreation director, Mr. Morris.
I've got some papers to hand out to you real quick, I didn't get them in on the email, so I thought I'd print them out and bring them out to you myself. Just a little breakdown of information I'm gonna go over, as well as some facts and statistics about what we have going on, and a little bit of what we're doing over here at the recreation department. I will start by saying that I'd like to welcome our new facilities coordinator, Thomas Whitman. He's been working hard, and you've probably seen him out on a mower in one of the fields out here lately, or neither of them want out on the track, they're working too good lately on the fields, trying to get softball and baseball fields up to date. A lot of what we've been dealing with is just poor soil and poor grass treatment, so you, I've got listed on there the field upgrades and treatment plans. I've already sent soil samples off to Clint's University to be able to get a read back from them about what a good treatment plan for these fields is, so that each field has its own individualized plan. So, that way, by, hopefully, the spring of next year, if nothing happens, our fields will look like professional fields. We're looking at having Bermuda on all of them instead of, over the past several years, apparently in the fall, there was rye grass being put out on some of these fields, which I'm sure looks pretty in the fall, but it doesn't do much good during the rest of the year. Right now, most of our fields are made up of broadleaf weeds, not the kind of weeds that you'd be, you need to be involved in, just broadleaf weeds. Working on getting that cleared up and getting those things pretty for the city. And then, in order to make them that way, we're gonna get those treatments started, so you'll see me and Thomas out in these fields a lot more, hopefully, over the summer. And then you'll see, too, I've got people coming to look at the scoreboards. Our scoreboards on our fields have not worked for a while now, so we're working on getting an electrician out here to be able to look at those and see what's causing the issues to get them repaired. Having the grass and plates, like I said, we're working on getting the fields and the base plates in the fields repositioned. A lot of those plates were mismeasured, misplaced, so we're working on getting those redone. On the recreation side of it, I want to give a big shout out to our programs coordinator, Sam Bailey. She has been doing a fantastic job up there and has been working herself to death to make sure that these games and activities happen up there, and it, it could not be run without her up there helping, so I can't say enough about what she does up there. Right now, we've got five different sports going on for the spring, volleyball, softball, baseball, softball, and tee ball. You can see in the print six how many athletes are in each one of those sports, and that's all right now, what's happening right now. Lot counting fall, winter, and summer sports that we have. Our biggest thing with the recreation side of it is we've been having to order equipment for these sports. So, you've probably seen, I'm sure, in City Hall, a lot of boxes coming in, and that's the equipment that we have to have for league regulations to be able to play. We've just started our registration for fall football this year. We've got some big surprises and big upgrades coming for the fall football that are negligible and actually a little bit cheaper on cost for those programs, so we're excited about getting to debut those new things for the fall season. And I'm sure the kids will love them, because all of it's things that they'll get to keep and things they'll get to see and wear, and they'll look good out on Pickens Fields representing Pickens with these new uniforms. And then the biggest thing on the recreation side of it is summer camp. We're gonna be bringing back summer camp this year. We've got the registrations information started, paperwork started, to be able to get that out there. We've had a lot of parents calling and asking about it, so we've brought it back, and we've got a lot of interest already. We've got people being interviewed for the coordinator position, for camp coordinator, so that way we can have that started as quickly as possible. And then a parks update, just a brief overview of them, we've reached out, and I've already talked to Clint's University, and got some wheels turning, we'll say, to be able to receive some interns over the summer, to be able to help with the parks and with the natural resource side of the parks and rec. And then the skate park has not been forgotten. We've been working on a location, and we believe we've got a location narrowed down, a place that'll be good, accessible, and kind of centralized to draw everybody together there near J.C. Park, and the fields, playground, and everything right there centralized. We are working on the trails as well down there, the signage for that, I've got trails designs for the signs, and about to place the orders for those. I've reached out to the SCPRT to be able to work on grants through the PARD and the RTP, to be able to help fund some of these smaller projects through the PARD, and then starting in July, I will apply for, and if nothing happens, we grant at least a portion of a trails grant through the SCPRT to be able to work on developing these trails. We've got 60 acres of just absolutely beautiful wood resource that we're underutilizing, so if we can develop those and make those more leisurely hikes and accessible to everybody, then why not? So, if I can get that through them, we'll be able to do a whole lot more upgrade. And then to speak on the hot topic right now, J.C. Playground, we are working on getting it back open as soon as possible. We have two different steps that have to happen before we can open it back up. One, as you stated, the trees that are a hazard and a danger and need to come down and be cleared out, we've already spoke to the gentleman that's gonna be doing it. He says that he's about two to three weeks out right now, depending on how long the projects he's on currently will take, then he'll be here to start getting ours cleared out, and he'll have all that cleaned. And once he gets it cleared out, the trees, we've got to grade and click, like, cover, I guess, some trip hazards and different hazards from roots and from erosion and whatnot, and once those things are covered, we'll be good to go. Now, once he gets out of the playground part of the trees, we'll go ahead and dive into the grading side, while he clears the other trees around the playground and whatnot, so that way, as soon as possible, we'll have that playground back open. And then over the next two to three months, once the equipment and playground equipment becomes available, we'll be able to start putting that in. But right now, our biggest issue is getting the equipment here. Everything seems to be on backorder, things that I never would have thought would be on backorder are, we ordered some cleaning supplies that came in today, they've been on backorder because they didn't have containers for them. Company reached out, found out that Dawn dish detergent had extra containers, so they shipped their hand sanitizer and Dawn dish detergent containers, because that's what they had until the warehouse, so. We got about three cases of that, and I was like, I didn't order dish soap, thankfully it was the right thing. And then, like I said, on that second page, you can just see a breakdown of what we're working on here. These fields, you can see the acreage and square footage, how many hours a week we're mowing, and that's just mowing. That's not striping, that's not edging, doing any trim work, that's just on the mower, riding and cutting. So, we're working on those, and you can see how often we paint, how often we mow, and then at the bottom, the rec breakdown, how many games and how many practices we had, as well as doing the schedules, doing the tournaments, the uniforms, and the special events such as banquets, awards ceremonies, and all these things for these programs. So, right now, there's three of us in the rec department that's doing all these things. We're working on getting two part-time, full, year-round positions brought in, which will help a whole lot, and I'm gonna hopefully try to requisition a third part-time, year-round position for the facility side of it to help alleviate some of this mowing and weeding as well. Right now, that's what we're doing, we're doing everything we can to push forward and make sure these fields and this property looks as bright and shiny as the city deserves, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good report.
The water and sewer side, Mr. Langston. Let's see, Mr. Langston, can you hold just one second, please? I missed the chief. He walked out, he walked out only a while ago.
He didn't miss much.
I thought he ran, so.
To Mr. Mulkey, I'm not from around here, I'm an outsider, but I don't feel like in most days, due to the kindness and affection that's been shown to me and my family here, and to that end, I wasn't expecting to see Mr. Mulkey tonight, and he showed me a photograph of then a young man, he knows him as Frankie Dodson, I always knew him as Frank Dodson. On May the 3rd comes up his, the anniversary of his death, we served together as deputy sheriffs in Augusta, Georgia, the Columbia County Sheriff's Office. He is one of my dearest friends, and he's buried up here at Pickens View, and thank you for showing me that photograph of Frankie. And I've had the opportunity to meet his beautiful mother, who lives in Easly now, so I, in some ways, I've been a part of Pickens a long time, all the way back to Frankie Dodson days. So, with that gone, I just wanted to thank Mr. Mulkey for showing me that tonight. Some very wonderful things happening in the police department, as usual, still motivated young men and women. One of the things that's been on the forefront for the last year and a half is that we have really not had a webpage. We have a very vibrant and gifted people that work on our social media with Facebook, but we've not had a functional, operational website. And we're in the process of the next 90 days to really get that up and going. The VC3 has worked with us, and one of the big components of that that comes up a lot, where people want to provide information, whether it's about a crime, or about a popple, or whatever it may be, and sometimes not leave a name, but we will now have a crimetips@pickenscity.com email that can remain anonymous, that will be generated from the website, and only if you want to leave contact information, but I would say within 90 days, we'll have a functional, professional website. We're busy, our call volume right now, we're 85 days into 2023, and I don't say this with pride, I say this with lament. At day 85, we have 246 arrests. That's three a day, that's an average of three a day. And that's not something to be prideful about, it is something to lament. But I, I give that by way of information in terms of how busy and how demanding this job is. Today, in the last hour, at case number 1,791, we're running 21 case numbers a day, 47 motor vehicle accidents, so we're, that's one, every 1.8 days is a motor vehicle accident. Mayor Pro Tem Davis, you know the effects of that here, with those 47 motor vehicle accidents, 12 injuries, we've had some serious ones, serious ones. Thankfully, we're still a city, we have zero fatalities and zero homicides. But I want you to know that these young men and young women in this police department, they're busy. They're not sitting around, they're doing, responding to calls, arresting who needs to be arrested, not arresting those who don't, but really out here working. That is a high call volume for us. We just finished our 2022 annual report, I think, I gave everyone the city council last year, in a bound book fashion that we're proud of, scaled it back, but I'll have that before you all at the next city council meeting, so you can see the work that's done by the police department. I met today with members of the Azalea Festival Committee, and we, tomorrow night at 11 o'clock, we'll be meeting at Legacy Square, and at midnight, we will start going right down to the center. That's taxing. I will be out there personally till 4:00, 4:30 in the morning for the next two nights, overseeing that with Detective Nally, but we're gonna get that done. And the weather looks good, and we've built in all that to get that cleaned up. Some good stuff that's coming up, Judge Gravely, who, we usually do what he wants us to do, he's a good man in this town, Pinewood Derby. If anybody's out and about on, in, on April the 1st at Doodle Park, hopefully, the, there's a whole first responder, police, fire, EMS, and the Pickens Police Department's been the champions of the Pinewood Derby, we've even beat a lot of Cub Scouts, we're pretty proud of that. Maybe that's not something to be proud of, but we're gonna win that Pinewood Derby again if you're out and about. Something really positive in the community, Judge Gravely really saw an opportunity to get first responders out to interact with these young people, and pushed us, and we had a good time with them last year, and we're trying to grow that a little bit. The other thing that's coming up, the week and before the Azalea Festival is an opportunity we've been given to work with the Youth Leadership Academy, and we're progressing right along. There'll be a 5K, which is called Hot Pursuit. Dr. Shriver is helping Ms. Blankenship at the YLA to work on that. Runners are already signing up, we'll also have the Catch Cop One Mile, and this is a fundraiser. Last year, just doing burpees, those, those young men and young women at Youth Leadership Academy raised $20,000. We're gonna get there this year, and that, and the sole goal of this is to put a handicap, wheelchair-accessible swing at Doodle Park. And I think that will be a great thing in this community. You wanna have a good time watching maybe 100-plus middle school students chasing 50 or 60 cops in uniform for a mile, you'd come out and see that one. And that will be on April, I believe, the 22nd. Now, not so much positive or negative, but just factually, one of the biggest challenges facing the police department right now, it's not the call volume, and we've got good morale, we got, we got great people, but attrition. And in the last, in the last month, so I've lost Master Patrol Officer Philip Beach, in about five or six days, I will be losing Master Patrol Officer Brody Pitts, I lost Corporal Jonathan Morris, and probably within the next 30 days, I'll be losing Master Patrol Officer Andrew Fowler, all of them going to bigger agencies, better pay, so every one of these police officers that has left and is leaving is, are getting good pay raises, less insurance, and, but we want to support. They see great opportunities in bigger agencies, and I'm proud that, on one hand, that, wow, they're taking Pickens police officers, that we're not, you know, that they think enough of us, and we've trained them, and I'm proud for them, but we have to replace them. And it was not lost on me, other agencies around here are suffering the same thing. There's the Liberty Police Department, this is their flyer that they put out on Facebook, their starting pay for a certified officer is $21.50 an hour. I've got, I've got a certified officer making $17 an hour, 18, 19, 20, he could go to Liberty right now and get a $4 an hour pay raise. $21.50 an hour, there are only two police officers in the city of Pickens that make more than $21.50 an hour. These are just facts. At $21.50 an hour, if you do the math on that, that is exactly what I make a year. So, I make what a certified police officer, and this is not about me, this is... This is, I'm just fine, I am content with what I make. But we've, we got to invest in these young people and, um, I'm, I'm a realist. And financially, um, I think it would be silly to say, let's give them all $35 an hour, that would be great. But just fact, this is just factually, this is $21.50 an hour at the Liberty Police Department. I've got them making $17, $18, most of them are right around 19. So virtually everyone in the Pickens Police Department is being paid at a lower rate than a starting officer at the Liberty Police Department. Um, God bless Liberty. Uh, I would like to say, you know, we, um, yeah, we still have great morale. And if you read the, the exit briefings with these people that have left, um, it's greater opportunities, it's good, there's no, no disgruntled employees, these are, these are fine, I'm, I'm going to support them. I want, I told Brody Pitts the other day, I said, well, you're the chief deputy of Oconee County Sheriff's Office in 20 years, I hope you say something nice about the city of Pickens where you got your start. Uh, and maybe he will, I, I can't wait to see where these people are going to go. It's, it's kind of, as tough as it is, uh, we're, we're in a crunch right now. Um, and we will be advertising, uh, but I would love to be able to advertise at a better rate. I've got one, uh, former Easely Police Officer that is interested in part-time. He makes a great living welding, but he's a certified officer. And we're going to take a look at our reserve officers because they already have some standing and status with the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. And we've got some physical abilities tests coming up this, this Friday. And for those that would be interested in coming full-time, we'll give them first shot and see what they can give. Uh, but, uh, at the end of it, the, uh, Corporal Morris's position is, uh, is still open. And I will be two positions after that on a positive note. I had a great, uh, conversation with Josh Young, who is one of the senior top administrators with the school, with Board of Education here. Um, other agencies around here, particularly Easely, I believe, they were given a, another SRO position that was funded by them with the high, uh, staff and student population at Easely High School. I approached him with the same, uh, deal that, look, not just from a, a population standpoint. And I, and I, I'd be remiss, you know, we had a horrible school shooting in Nashville, Tennessee today, at a small Christian school, uh, that's associated with Presbyterian Church America. Three children dead, uh, I believe, uh, three staff members and the shooter was killed. We, we don't want that to happen, that's, that's unthinkable. But there are other safety issues with, whether it's vaping and drugs and bullying and, and assaults. We've got to be spot on, but from a, uh, Mr. Young was very receptive about working with us to maybe fund another SRO position that could be supervisory in nature, as well as handle a lot of the juvenile crimes, to keep our SROs on campus. Uh, as Morris could tell, I've heard him on the radio, they, off-campus, on welfare checks, checking on the kids. And every time an SRO leaves that school, guess what that means? There's no SRO at the school. And, um, I furnished them a, a very formal written request, laying out the numbers, and they're going to talk about it. And I'm hoping and praying for the best, uh, and they want, they want the best too. But we, it's, it's, it's just a funding issue. If we get that from, uh, the district, that'll be a great thing for us to have that extra SRO position. And this, these things go on all year long. When school's out for the summer, every school in the city of Pickens has after-school summer programs going on with hundreds of students. And our SROs have to remain there being engaged. So it's not as if we just turn them over to the road patrol and they, and we get free work for the summer. The, these positions are ongoing and they're vital positions relationally with these young people. Uh, and we love the work that they do. I, I don't want to leave it on a, on a totally negative thing in terms of losing people. Um, we're losing good people. And I love them, I support them, I want them to have great long working careers and look back on that, old Pickens, uh, they train us well. We'll, we'll find the people and we'll fill the positions. Uh, but just be aware factually, financially, that those are, those numbers, what Liberty Police Department is paying, and $17 an hour is just not enough, uh, to, and then, and to live in this community and raise families. Uh, hopefully we can do a little better and don't hate me when I come back at budget time and say, because of this call volume, I, I need even more people. Uh, but I probably will, but I'll be realistic about it. So I, I still say thank you for the opportunity to be here and do this job. I still have the greatest job in this city, absolutely.
How many hours does the Librider go?
I don't know. I should know.
They have many, I don't think.
They're, they're very similar in size. Their call volume is not what ours is. That, um, our new officer from Liberty is just astounded about the amount of traffic and the, and the call volume and, and the arrests. And I, I don't know what that, why that is, the crossroads of the highways here, I don't know. And they do a good job down there, um, but our, I know that our call volume is much higher and our arrests are much higher.
Well, I was at a funeral, um, Saturday, and the sheriff of Oconee County was there. He told me to tell you thank you.
Yeah.
Because he's got two of us. I think, in my, not my opinion and also recommendation, that we ought to aggressively do the best that we can to help our police department. They need the money to be able to fund the things to help protect us. Now, if we don't get the calls and we're upset when they don't come on 911 calls and things of that nature, I think we ought to put our money where our mouth is if we can to try to aggressively attack this before it gets to be a problem.
That's, at 17, that's, that's my lowest, and that's a certified officer, and that's pretty tough. Uh, but I can say, I speak for that, uh, young person, and they love coming to work every day and just have a great time. So it's not a negative thing, it's, these are just some factual realities as people start having families do well. But we should be proud that, that these agencies are picking up these people and they're confident in the product that we're giving them here.
Well, we've always had that problem with the cities. The sheriff's office always pays more, the bigger cities pay more, and now Liberty's paying more.
Well, we, and right, but we, you know, we've gotten some officers from the sheriff's office. I tell you that, uh, if you don't know, our candidate Officer Wimpy, who came over here from the sheriff's office, man the job he does every day. Uh, that, uh, Wood Nancy, who came from Liberty, just as happy as she can be. And, um, we'll, we'll find the people.
Yeah, it's not all that money all the time.
It's not, but we, uh, we can do a little better, I think, we'll get there.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Blankenship, we'll try this, we'll try it one more time.
Yes, sir. Yes. Well, thank you all for having me. Uh, we're, uh, yeah, grateful to be here and be serving the city. And, uh, we are, C O B S is working on reevaluating our, our staffing over the past couple of months. And we, uh, it became clear when I became project manager, we needed to hire a few folks. So we, uh, conducted a, a lot of interviews and, uh, mostly the staffing has been out on the distribution and collection system. So, uh, we've had guys who really overworked on the, uh, distribution system getting called out. Uh, you know, be out till 3:00 in the morning, got to be back at work at 7:30, work all day. Um, and, uh, you know, cold and wet and not the best of working conditions all the time. And, um, but we are excited about where we're going. We've got, um, I've had five guys hired over the past month. And, um, just excited about, uh, the, the next generation at the water plant. We've got some guys who are saying, hey, bring some young guys in because we, we, we're eyeing the door. Um, and then, you know, we've got other guys who are, uh, just excited to be training, uh, uh, new operators on the distribution system and making sure we're taking care of all the city's needs as far as water and wastewater goes. So, um, yeah, we've had, I listed one of our new employees who started there, and I've had several more start since then. And, um, I know you asked about lead service line inventory last time. We are, uh, starting to work on that. Uh, the beginning of that process is really records and data monitoring. So we're, we're starting there, uh, but I feel confident we'll be, um, well done with that before the deadline in October of '24. So, um, we have, uh, been doing some work on a couple of the lift stations that, uh, we've had some issues with. We had a, had, had to have some emergency pumps brought in to keep from overflow happening. Um, and we're working on getting those pumps, uh, upgraded as we speak now. Um, we're putting some new chemicals in to cut down on the fats, oil, and grease in those lift stations to cut down on the wear and tear of the pumps. Um, I mean, we're, we're always dealing with aging infrastructure here, so we know things are going to fail. It's not a question of if, it's just when. But, um, you know, I'm preaching to my team every day, we want to go from a reactive state to a proactive state. So we're, right now, we're kind of in the midst of being reactive. We get the call, we have to go out, fix the leak, um, but we're not so much doing the proactive stuff. So we're, we're trying to set goals and get there. Um, and training folks is just kind of part of that. So, um, really all the water quality data and the wastewater effluent data is in here as well. We feel good about where we've been, no, no violations to speak of. Um, so we, uh, yeah, we're excited about the direction moving forward. And I'll answer any questions or concerns that maybe had on the water wastewater end. But now I'll let you all move on.
Are you doing the work order report that was in here? Is that coming from you guys?
Yes.
That's right. I was really interested to read all that today.
Good, yeah, we'll keep that coming. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to say one thing from this, from the city standpoint with the workers that we have and the, the amount of workers that we have, and we don't have enough in each department. From, in my opinion, from the, uh, sanitation side to the fire department, to the police department. Uh, but, but you all are doing an awesome job keeping up with this city. I know some stuff slides through the cracks because of the manpower and, and, and the workability. But, uh, but you all are doing an awesome job in each department, and I for one appreciate it. Uh, I've got one other thing that I saw laying on the desk here. Uh, some grand opens and ribbon cuttings.
Yes.
Uh, would you like to?
Sure.
Would you like to tell us about that?
Lisa Tarnik with the Greater Pickens Chamber of Commerce, serving the city and the greater Pickens area. So we have a couple of them that I have scheduled. Pet Sense is a pet supply store that is opening at 502 Ann Street. That'll be this Saturday at 8:50 a.m. They want it before the store opens, so it'll be an early one. Then at 11 o'clock, I'll be going over to the Market at the Mill and opening up Level Zone. It is a family entertainment center. They are starting with Build a Buddy, which is very similar to Build a Bear. You pick an animal, you stuff it, you put a wish in it, you dress it. And then they will go to an entertainment center of video games. And eventually, they will be opening up a, um, like a paint studio, family paint studio, come and paint and things like that. So they're doing it in stages, but we're starting with the first one, which is Build a Buddy, and that is called Level Zone. And then on Friday, April 14th, again at the Market at the Mill, is Table Rock Video. This is a video rental store, much like the video rental stores of the 80s where you would go in and pick out your favorite movie and then on your way out, you'd get your movie popcorn and your movie candy, and then you would go home and watch your movie. You get to keep the movie for a week, and it's $1.99 to rent a movie. They also have equipment to rent, so if you don't have a DVD player or a VHS player, they will have that as well. So those are the three that I have and that I can tell you about.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions?
Anyone else have anything?
I'd just like for Donna to know this so she can pass it along to whoever needs to know. Still getting, uh, requests for brush pickup on, uh, Eastly, Bevin Street, Rigdon Circle, and West Baker Street.
And then Holland Drive to that too.
Yeah, Glace Mountain Street too.
I've been up here three times and it hasn't been done.
It'll be a month from now that's been up.
Thank you. Anything else? Number five is a German, get a motion.
Make a motion with a German.
Second.
All in favor?
A greater item.